Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Let the record show that all members of the city council are present this evening with the exception of Councilman Ted Fairbanks. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted on the meeting room wall and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is a proclamation. It is my pleasure to issue a proclamation regarding Surtoma Club Day, whereas Beatrice Surtoma Club has been a strong supporter of the youth of the Beatrice community, and whereas Beatrice Surtoma Club has been an active partner in community projects, and whereas Beatrice Surtoma Club values and gives recognition to our community leaders, and whereas Beatrice Surtoma Club has improved the quality of life for community members impacted by hearing laws through education and support. Now therefore I stand, Wirth Mayor of the city of Beatrice, to proclaim October 26th, 2017 as Surtoma Day in Beatrice, Nebraska. Witness my hand an official seal of the city of Beatrice this 16th day of October 2017. There is no one present from the Surtoma Club this evening, but I'm going to make a presentation to them on Monday, October the 23rd, at their regularly scheduled meeting. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item on the agenda is Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on October 2nd, 2017, as on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of treasurer's report of claims. E1, approval of Beatrice Humane Society claim in the amount of $1,000. E2, approval of Gage Area Growth Engage Claim in the amount of $33,763.59. Item E3, approval of balance of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $386,670.28. Item F, approval of Boswell Report of Claims in the amount of $101,732.48. Item G, approval of a special designated license for Main Street Beatrice for Governor's Pheasant Hunt fundraiser on November 3rd, 2017, from 4:30 PM until 12:00 AM at 701 Court Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item H, approval of Beatrice Plus funding request from City of Beatrice Public Properties Department in the amount of $6,000 per year for five years to help construct an indoor batting facility at Hannibal Park as recommended by the Beatrice Plus Advisory Board. And Item I, Resolution Number 6125 granting permission to the Beatrice Area Chamber of Commerce and Gage County Tourism and their designees to sell or offer for sale or peddle goods, wares, or merchandise in Charles Park as part of the holiday lighted parade. Any item that any member from the council wants removed from the consent agenda, Phil?
H.
H?
The same.
Same?
I will abstain from E2.
So noted. Anybody from the public want anything removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I move that all the items listed under the consent agenda, with the exception of Item H, be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Borg, and that all items under the consent agenda be approved. Your vote, please.
Phil, do you need to abstain from E1?
Not anymore.
Not anymore? She's off the board?
Right.
Okay. Just want to make sure before we vote it.
That is approved, 7-0. Item H, Mr. Catlin?
I move for the approval of Beatrice Plus funding request from the City of Beatrice Public Properties Department in the amount of $6,000 per year for five years to construct an indoor batting facility at Hannibal Park as recommended by the Beatrice Plus Advisory Board, be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that the funding request of Beatrice Plus to the Public Properties Department, $6,000 per year for five years for a batting facility at Hannibal Park. Phil?
I pulled it off just for clarification. They'd asked for $10,000 for three years, same amount, $30,000, but we are doing it over a longer period of time. Will this work in their construction if we spread it out over five years instead of three years?
As far as the construction goes, we plan this facility being constructed by, say, June of this year.
Okay.
So what will happen is the city, essentially the city will act as the bank. We have other pledges coming in from the Girls' Softball Association and Bullets, and we have some grants that are out there right now. Whatever funds come back in will be used to repay the city dollars that were used to build the facility.
Because I think this is a great program for us to get involved with. There's hundreds of kids that will be using this, something to keep them occupied during the winter. So I think it'd be a good idea to go ahead and build this and they won't be over here on Monday nights banging the softball.
Right?
I'm just kind of curious why we're going to do this. I know it's a good idea. But we just approved a two-year budget and nothing was mentioned in there. Was there for money?
Yes, in your two-year budget, there's a $200,000 put aside for this facility to be built.
Not enough to cover the whole works of itself?
Yes, there's enough money budgeted to cover the entire building. Whatever money we can recruit from other organizations will be used to put those dollars back into our lodging tax dollars to be used for other projects.
There have been several other organizations come forward that indicated that they were going to contribute.
And who has controlled this? I'm sure it's going to be a locked facility.
It'll be a locked facility owned and controlled by the city of Beatrice.
Not accessible to everyday people, or maybe a few coaches?
Correct. We will, our plan at this point is to have a key FOB system so we can lock down certain FOBs certain days. Right now, the plan is maybe Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday is girls softball, Thursday, Friday, Saturday is Bullets, and they switch the next week. And then however they work to work through their organization, have which teams come in those nights, that's between them. But that way someone would have control over who's in the facilities and what times.
So if just the average citizen is not on a member of a team or league, they might have access to it, really?
Right now, we're saying no. We're trying to figure out how to, we want to make sure we have enough time for those teams that have put in some money for the program. If we can work through that and then we have time still left over, we've talked about selling some type of membership, giving some opposition, some opportunity for members from the public to come in and use the facility. But first, we want to make sure that those organizations that are contributing to the project have the facility first.
I think it's wrong to give city money to a project like this and then include everybody that wants to use it. It's okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Anyone from the public? All right, and your vote, please. And that is approved, 5-2, with Councilmen Kerr and Partey voting no. All right. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing to supplement the fiscal year 2017 budget. Tobias?
Right. What we're presenting to you is another supplement to our fiscal year 2017 budget. Really, there are two reasons for it. The first one has to do with health insurance claims. We have some health insurance claims that ran larger than anticipated. However, all those claims are by individuals who have met their spec, which essentially means that we'll get repaid by our reinsurance at a future date. So we pay the claim today, we'll get repaid by a reinsurance sometime next 60 or 90 days. So it's just simply a timing issue on that one. The other big one is the gas plant. As we all know, the gas plant's been going on for some time. But we did not receive the August bill until September 28th. That bill has to get booked into FY17. Our share on that bill was $95,000. When we reviewed that bill, we noticed that the budget for this project had increased by $2 million, and it showed that there's still $1.4 million to be expended on the project yet. Take 25% of $1.4 million, it's $350,000. We're not sure if it's going to hit and be on the September or October bill for this year. If it's a September bill, it'll fall back into FY17. If it's on the October bill, it'll fall into FY18. We're not entirely sure when it's going to come. We've been trying to find that information out. So we're asking you to supplement the budget for that purpose. If we don't spend the money on the gas plant, we don't spend the money, and we just move on. If we do, and it comes, and then we'll obviously have the budget supplemented for those purposes. We asked why the budget increased to $2 million. The first one, if you remember, we had talked about doing the cleanup west of the railroad tracks this year, coming back in a future time and cleaning up east of the railroad tracks. We were able to get permission and do it all in one year. That was part of the increase in the budget. The other big reason sitting out there right now is those gas cylinders that are down on site and trying to determine what to do with them. They have estimated the worst-case scenario, if those need to be cleaned up, and how they get cleaned up. That's what they put into the budget. Now, from the initial examination that was occurred about a week or so ago, it may not be as bad as we initially thought, but they estimated the worst-case scenario and put that into their budget.
Questions? Rich?
On the gas plant, you sent out a deal the other day, Toby. There's a way to possibly to recoup some of that money?
We have been contacted by a, they're not a law firm. They have some attorneys, they have some engineers, but a consultant, if you will, out of Washington DC, who believes there may be an avenue for the city to recover some additional funds for this. We're currently examining those and pulling some information together. We have a meeting again in mid-November to see if there's something plausible there for us to be able to recruit some additional funds.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public? All right. Entertained a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:10 PM.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbach, that the public hearing be closed at 7:10 PM. Your vote, please. And that is approved, 7-0. Ordinance to adopt the supplemental budget for fiscal year 2017?
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 17-029. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by Partey, that the ordinance be given number 17-029. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, 7-0. Ordinance number 17-029 by number the first time, ordinance number 17-029 by number the second time, and ordinance number 17-029 the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance, number 17-029, be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbach, that ordinance number 17-029 be passed and approved. Any further discussion from anyone? Public? All right, your vote, please. And that is approved, 7-0. Ordinance number 17-029 has been adopted. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the rezoning application of the city of Beatrice for the Beatrice State Developmental Center, Gage County, Nebraska, partial number ID number 013660600 and ID number one, or I'm sorry, 013661100, commonly known as 3000 Lincoln Street from AG Agriculture to Office.
So we were contacted by BSDC here, well, probably about six weeks ago, inquiring about adding some additional services out there. In doing so, a question came up about zoning. We got looking at it. It's a parcel of land that's never been zoned, so they just kind of fell into an ag zoning. And so our recommendation is that we zone them O for office, which allows for the type of medical services that they provide out there. If you recall, when we rezoned Whispering Winds, which is the long-term care facility going in next to it, we zoned that O for office because it kind of fit. We kind of figured that BSDC should have been zone O. So once they kind of brought it up to our attention, and that's why we're recommending that it be zoned office. We'll not change anything, any of the services they provide out there today, or any of the care that they do. Won't make any impact there.
Questions? Anyone? Comments? Public? Recommend the public hearing be closed?
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:13 PM.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaugh, that the public hearing be closed at 7:13 PM. Your vote, please. And that is approved, 7-0. Mr. Catlin? I beg your pardon. Public hearing on the rezoning application of Southeast Community College. I'm not going to read the parcel numbers. Everybody knows where it's located, 4771 West Cot Street, from AG Agriculture to Office, which would be the O designation.
This is another one that as we looked at BSDC, we started looking at the maps, seeing whether places were out there. We noticed that the college had never been zoned either, and so it was zoned ag. So our recommendation there was to zone, change the zoning to O. O allows for colleges and universities and services of those types. Again, makes no impact on the services they provide today. Just, it's probably what they should have been zoned a number of years ago. So we're simply clearing, cleaning up the zoning ordinance that we have out there.
Questions? Anyone? Anyone from the public?
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:14 PM.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that the public hearing be closed at 7:14 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved, 7-0. The next one is a public hearing on the rezoning application of the city of Beatrice for Diamond T Ranch, which is the truck stop north of Beatrice, also Gage County Equipment. And then, across the road to the west, across the highway to the west, a 150 by 125-foot portion of Gage County parcel ID number 004378000, located 500 feet from the quarter line of Section 446, from AG Agriculture to GC General Commercial.
Once again, as we were looking at other, the first two parcels, we were looking around. We found this one on the north side of town that should have been rezoned, probably when we annexed out to Hickory Road. That would have given us the opportunity to rezone this parcel. So it's been about seven, eight years. The truck stop out north is zoned ag. Obviously, it's a commercial endeavor, and so our recommendation is to use on that portion of commercial. Same thing goes with the Gage County Equipment that's out there as well. It's a commercial facility. While looking at that, we noticed that the billboard on the west side of the road is not in, should have been zoned commercial. It's being used for a commercial purpose, i.e. they're selling or renting a billboard space. And so that's why we included that portion on the west side of town, or on the west side of the road there. If you look at the planning and zoning recommendation, their recommendation was to rezone the highway and the parcels on the east side of the road as general commercial. Their recommendation was to leave the west, the parcel on the west side of the road alone, not to rezone it, to leave it ag. That was their recommendation.
Questions from the council? From the public? Mr. Catlin? I beg your pardon? Sure. Sure, sure. Come on up. You can sit right here. There's a microphone. You don't have to pull it. It's pretty sensitive, so. Just state your name and your address, please.
My name is Emily Haxby. My address is 8867 Southwest 86th Road of Claytonia.
Okay.
I'm here, I mean, up in my uncle and my aunt, they're the landowners. We, the reason we don't want it zoned, rezoned, is that it is agricultural land, and we use it that way. It's only leased out at the moment to USA Outdoor. Once the billboard is removed, it will continue to be used agriculturally. Which brings me to my next point. The sign was actually blown over on the storm of June 16th, and it is a non-conforming sign, and it was illegally rebuilt. We received a letter from the state saying that the company would have to remove their sign because they were in non-compliance. Rezoning our farm to general commercial will not allow the sign to remain there. I have a letter from the state talking about this and the reasons why. I also have the original letters from the state, because we get carbon copies since we were the landowners, about the sign being blown down. You guys can have those. They're all here.
Okay.
And also, Jean Todd is here too to clarify the finer points on why it's not supposed to be there. I also understand it that as a, the landowner or the city of Beatrice are the ones that have to ask for it to be rezoned. We didn't ask, obviously, for it to be rezoned. And you're saying like to clean house, to, you know, take care of the things that haven't been rezoned yet. Well, I have a picture here of the rezoning map that we got to begin with, from the city. And I, so I can show you here, this is where our sign is that you're wanting to include. Right here, actually, just still across the highway from this truck stop is also another sign by the same company, but wasn't included in your map, if you're trying to, you know, cover everything. Because your line is to Elm Road, which, that would be there, and if you're, eh. Trying to explain here. But it's only 1,000 feet to the north, and if that was the idea is to clean house, that one also would have been included, instead of the timing of how this one is here. I agree that the truck stop should be rezoned as general commercial, as that is its purpose. However, our farm ground has no connection with the truck stop. It is separated by a state highway, and we farm it, which is its purpose and why we think it should stay zoned agricultural. Please go with the planning and zoning's recommendation to exclude the 150 by 125-foot portion across from the truck stop. I also have a picture here that I took from the highway, so you can see the truck stop here. The new sign we're there including is here, and here is the other sign that was not going across from the truck stop. I think that's all.
Anybody have any questions of Emily? Bob?
So, the sign's illegal.
Yes, it was illegally rebuilt.
And is it going down in the sometime future?
Yes, it should be. This, I believe the state has got their attorney on it now. I don't know exactly where that all is with. She can fill you in if you guys have any more questions.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Do you guys want?
If you want to leave that with us, that'd be great. Rick?
You did a nice job of presenting. There evidently was quite a lengthy discussion in planning and zoning, and I think they made the right decision recommending that it stay, that we go to ag.
A question I have is if the sign is over 50% damaged, can it be rebuilt?
Honestly, that'd probably be a question for Jean. I don't know if Jean wants to come up and answer that. Jean's with the Department of Roads.
Okay.
Or Department of Transportation, I'm sorry. Let's get that correct.
If you'd state your name, Jean, and your address, that'd be great, and who you're with.
My name is Jean Todd. That's J-E-A-N-T-O-D-D. And I, my title is Highway Beautification Supervisor with Nebraska Department of Transportation. Our office is located at 1600 Highway 2 in Lincoln. My office regulates outdoor advertising signs adjacent to the interstate and almost all highways throughout the state. It's a federal program we are required to implement. Emily stated things pretty clearly in her presentation. The sign is what's known as a non-conforming sign, which means it was legally placed, but currently does not meet regulations. And there are requirements for non-conforming signs, excuse me. One of those being, if they're wind damaged, they need an appraisal. They cannot be rebuilt without a new application. So in both of those instances, it was rebuilt without an appraisal and without a new application being submitted. Currently, these Class III signs, also known as billboards, need to be on land that's zoned properly, commercial or industrial. And the land is now zoned agricultural. So this rezoning would be what we consider spot zoning. And we will not recognize spot zoning simply to accommodate a billboard. And your previous question about the 50% damage, actually, our rules and regulations, if a non-conforming sign is damaged by winds and so forth, we are required to do an appraisal. And there's a formula. I can't tell you what that exact formula is, but the percentage is 60%. If it's damaged 60% or more, it cannot be rebuilt. So.
Questions? Rich?
This sign's coming down, that other sign going to be coming down too, to the north?
To my knowledge, that sign was not wind damaged or rebuilt or anything.
But it's, it's non-conforming.
It is non-conforming, which means, in a sense, it means grandfathered, but it can remain. But there are certain restrictions to maintenance and so forth.
Any other questions of Jean? Anybody from the public? All right, Jean, thank you very much. Gentlemen, what would you like to do?
We just have to close the public hearing.
Sorry.
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:24 PM.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbach, that the public hearing be closed at 7:24 PM. Vote, please. That is approved, 7-0. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 6126, entering into an agreement to loan $6,700 to Michael S. Schaefer and Shelley R. Schaefer for their building located at 608 Court Street as part of the downtown facade improvement program and CBG grant 15-DTR-109.
Mayor, I would move that Resolution Number 6126 be passed and adopted.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbach, that Resolution Number 6126 be passed and adopted. We've seen quite a few of these come through. This is just another one. Anything unusual or different?
The only thing I want to clarify is that all these projects don't have five years to complete the project. They have about 12 months to complete the project. That has to be done by November 1st of 18, and then they have to keep the improvements for five years. I did have some questions about that clarification, but otherwise, no, it's all the same as all the other agreement.
Have questions? Is this one of the theaters?
Yes, this would be both theaters on each side of the highway.
Don't they have an outstanding loan with us? They're far behind on payments?
Technically, this goes to Michael and Shelley Schaefer. They are not behind on any payments because the loan we have, the CBG loan we have outstanding is with Candham's Inc., which is legally a separate entity. But Candham's Inc. is, yes, behind on their payments to the city on a CBG loan.
So I kind of find it hard to okay this loan if the same individuals are behind on payments and not doing the best job of trying to keep it up.
Okay. Other questions? Phil?
For this one, I will abstain. My son does work for Mike Schaefer, just to, nobody can say later that.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public? All right, your vote, please. And that is approved. Beg your pardon?
It doesn't. You only have four votes. You have the opportunity to vote if you so desire.
I will vote, and I will vote in favor of it. So that is approved, 5 in favor, 2 against. Kerr and Partey and Cook abstains. Resolution Number 6126 has been passed and approved. Next item is Resolution Number 6127, entering into an agreement to loan $5,000 to Richard D. Claybaugh and Linda K. Claybaugh for their building located at 501 Court Street as part of the downtown facade improvement program and CBG grant 15-DTR-109.
Mayor, I would move that Resolution Number 6127 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that Resolution 6127 be passed and adopted. Mr. Claybaugh, I assume you're going to abstain?
Yes, sir.
Questions? Comments from the public? Your vote, please. That is approved, 6-0, with one abstention, and that's Mr. Claybaugh. Resolution Number 6127 has been passed and adopted. Next item is Resolution Number 6128, entering into a lease with USA Outdoor 3 for real property near 6th Street and Caldwell Street, Beatrice, Nebraska.
Mayor, I would move that Resolution Number 6128 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that Resolution Number 6128 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
If you recall, there was a billboard located on the side of the grain elevator there in about the 700 block of South 6th Street. When we acquired that facility, we acquired the lease that went along with it. It was a 20-year lease. We were in a year about four. That was signed with the previous owner of that facility. Obviously, we're demolishing that building, so the lease had, or that billboard had to be removed. When I initially talked to them, one option was to put back up the billboard at the same location or to look to find a different.
Or to look to find a different location, uh, for that billboard. So what we have before you tonight is a lease. That would move the billboard off the grain elevator. They have, uh, presented the termination of that lease. And enter into a new lease that would go south on Highway, uh, seventy-seven. It would go just north of the South Sixth Street Bridge. On the west side of the road. On the west side is the dog park and there is a, um, electric, uh, substation that's right there. It would go just east of the electric substation, right on the highway there, is where we're proposing that this new billboard be installed. Obviously, they have to meet all the Department of Roads and everybody else's requirements that are out there, uh, but this was the area that we've proposed to have leased to them.
Questions?
Would you say that again, where is it?
Just north of the South Sixth Street Bridge.
On the west side.
On the west side, in that little.
Yeah, there's some ground in there that we purchased back in the thirties, uh, without flood plan or anything else, so.
Further comments? Anybody from the public? All right, your vote please. And that is approved seven zero. Resolution number six one two eight has been passed and adopted. Next item is ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Beatrice by changing the zoning of, of Beatrice State Developmental Center. From agriculture to office.
Mayor, I would move, with movement said ordinance be given number seventeen dash zero three zero. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Party, that ordinance be given number seventeen dash zero three zero, the title approved, the rules suspended, and ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote please. That is approved seven zero. Ordinance number seventeen dash zero three zero by number the first time. Ordinance seventeen dash zero three zero by number the second time. And ordinance number seventeen dash zero three zero by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number seventeen dash zero three zero be passed and appro.
By Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that ordinance number seventeen dash zero three zero be passed and approved. Any further discussion regarding the rezoning of BSDC?
The only thing I would add is playing and zoning's recommendation was to rezone this parcel.
Any other questions, comments from the public? Your vote please. And that is approved seven zero. Ordinance number seventeen dash zero three zero has been approved. Next item is ordinance amending the zoning map for the city of Beatrice. By changing the zoning of Southeast Community College from agriculture to office.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number seventeen dash zero three one. The title for, the title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that the ordinance be given number seventeen dash zero three one, title thereof approved, rules suspended, and ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Again, the motion to dis, to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote please. And that is approved seven zero. Ordinance number seventeen dash zero three one by number the first time. Ordinance number seventeen dash zero three one by number the second time, and ordinance number seventeen dash zero three one by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number seventeen dash zero three one be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that ordinance number seventeen dash zero three one be passed and approved. Any further discussion?
Again, playing and zoning's recommendation on this was to approve the rezoning. I believe Phil.
Phil?
Changing it from. To ag to general, commercial, not going, to, oh, excuse me, is not going to change with their programs out there with the farming and things, what they can do.
No, if you look in. You look in your, uh, pack, I don't remember what pages on it. All we're rezoning is where the main campus is at, which is inside the city limits, everything outside, so. The bus, the business campus.
It's good.
Back to the north, that's what's gonna be rezoned. Oh, all of the ag ground stays as ag ground.
I looked around, I couldn't find it. I thought, well, before we did something, we all sudden found he couldn't farm that anymore, we thought.
No, we left that out.
Okay.
Any other comments? From the public, and your vote please. And that is approved. That is approved, six to zero with, uh, Bob Morgan abstaining. Ordinance number seventeen dash zero three one has been passed and approved. Next item is an ordinance to amend the zoning map city of Beatrice, uh, regarding Diamond T, regarding Gage County equipment. And also regarding the property, the agricultural property just to the west of Highway seventy-seven. Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number seventeen dash zero three two, the title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that the ordinance be given number seventeen dash zero three two, the title thereof approved, rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Uh, your vote please.
The only thing I would note is even if you suspend the rules, you still have the opportunity to amend it when it comes time, so if that's a question anybody has, just so we clarify that.
Appreciate that. And that's approved seven zero. Ordinance number seventeen dash zero three two by number only the first time. Ordinance number seventeen dash zero three two by number the second time, and ordinance number seventeen dash zero three two by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that, that ord, that ordinance number seventeen dash zero three two be passed and appro.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that ordinance number seventeen dash zero three two be passed and approved. Mr. Kerr?
On the discussion, I would like to pose an amendment that we go with the, uh, with the, um, zoning board's, uh, um.
Recommendation?
Recommendation that the, the ag land be excluded from the, uh. The procedure here.
So that would be.
Leave it as ag and not to put it as general commercial.
So that would be to remove the one hundred and fifty by one hundred and twenty-five foot portion of Gage County parcel, getting an eight thousand, located five hundred feet north of section four four six. That last portion would be excluded. The rest of it would be rezoned from ag to general commercial. That's your motion?
Yes.
Motion by Kerr, and then there's a second by Morgan.
I, I thought that's what he said. I just wanted to clarify that I heard him correctly.
Is that what you folks want?
Any further discussion? From anyone, we're gonna vote on the amendment first. And your vote please. That is approved seven zero. Next, we're going to vote on the remaining portion of that ordinance, seventeen dash zero three two. Am I correct?
That's correct.
All right.
That's what's, the motion's left on the floor is to pass the ordinance with the exclusion of their property there, which would include the billboard.
Any further discussion? And your vote please. And that is approved seven zero. Ordinance number seventeen dash zero three two has been passed and adopted. Thank you for coming. Next item is an ordinance vacating a portion of Irving Street. Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number seventeen dash zero three three, the title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that the ordinance be given number seventeen dash zero three three, the title thereof approved, rules be suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote please, and that is approved seven zero. Ordinance number seventeen dash zero three three by number the first time, ordinance seventeen dash zero three three by number the second time. And ordinance number seventeen dash zero three three by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number seventeen dash zero three three be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Party, that the ordinance number, um, seventeen dash zero three three be passed and approved. Any further discussion?
If you look on page ninety-three of your packet, we have a map that shows you what we're talking about. This is, this portion of Irving Street is by Paddock Lane School, easiest way to describe it for everybody. Though, everything else on, on Irving Street between fourteenth and sixteenth was vacated, at least nineteen ninety-four, and most of it was vacated before then. This last portion has been remaining out there. The school is looking to build a new building at that location. As we're working through that process. The question came up about building over lot lines and there's easements that need to be had for different utilities and things like that, and it became clear that the easiest thing for them to do was simply replat the entire parcel. While working through their surveyor, he said it would be much easier for him if we vacated Irving Street now. And include it as part of the plat rather than afterwards and then try and include it later. And so that's why we're proposing vacating Irving Street now. It will remain, uh, ownership under the city of Beatrice. There are no utilities through that area. Today's just the grass playground. It's all it is today, so.
What kind of building are they going to use that as?
They're building, as part of their, their plan, I think, I don't remember the size of it, but it's just some type of classroom building. They're gonna build about where the baseball field is at today.
Not a metal dome?
Yeah, I think it's a metal building.
It is a metal building.
I think it is.
So that's why we're proposing vacating Irving Street. Title will remain with us. At some point, we may or may not have discussions with the ci, with the school about acquiring it. But it just helps the plat process as that comes forward.
I don't know, that can be very valuable to us.
Might be worth three hundred dollars.
Any further discussion? Gentlemen, your vote please. And that is approved seven zero. Ordinance number seventeen dash zero three three has been passed and adopted. Next item on the agenda is the public forum. The purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Does any city council member have anything for the public forum? We have someone in the audience, Dave Condi, with, uh, an organization called A Warmer Day, who is going to make a, uh, presentation to us. Mr. Condi, if you would, uh, just state your name and address, please, and.
Absolutely. My name is Dave Condi. I live at five thirty-five Jefferson Street in Claytonia. And as you stated, I'm here on behalf of A Warmer Day. A Warmer Day is a charity that my wife and I founded in two thousand sixteen, just last year. Uh, in our first year, we gave away about eight hundred coats to underprivileged families here in Nebraska. Our goal this year is to give away thirty-five hundred coats. Uh, to that end, uh, we are holding a citywide coat drive, uh, in Beatrice this, this year. Uh, we're doing that in conjunction with, uh, the Beatrice Police Department, Beatrice Public Schools, the Gage County Sheriff's Department, and the Beatrice Public Library. Uh, and also in partnership with our two sponsors here in Beatrice, which is, uh, Precise Fabrication and World Lawn Power Equipment. And I am just here to let you know about it and, uh, ask for your support and the public's support in getting the word out, uh, to make everyone aware of the coat drive. Uh, once the coat drive concludes at the end of next month, uh, excuse, uh, yes, at the end of next month. Uh, we will also be hosting a, uh, distribution here in Beatrice where we'll give away those coats that we collected during the drive, at least as many as we can. Uh, the date and location of that has not been decided yet, but once it is, we'll make you aware of it. So that is, uh, that's all I have. I hope that, uh, everyone will do their part to help us get the word out about this event.
Questions of Dave?
Where do we donate coats?
Ah, it's on the flyer in front of you, but, uh, the four locations that we have, actually five, uh, here in Beatrice are, uh, there's two locations for Mosaic. Uh, Beatrice Fire and, and Rescue, Homestead Village, uh, which is an apartment community here in Beatrice, and First State Bank are all collection sites.
Very good.
Again, any questions of Dave?
When was the dates, Dave? It's all month?
It's, it is actually two months. It started October first and it, uh, runs through November thirtieth.
All right, Dave, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Absolutely. All right, uh, we're going to move on, uh, just under discussion of reports, and Walker Zolkowski, the executive director of Engage. Is going to provide us with a quarterly report. Walker, welcome.
Thank you. Everyone should have my. Slightly newly formatted report. I think it looks a little bit different than I've given you the last year and a half, so. Missing anything, let me know. I guess I'll kind of start with that, so if you like the new format or if there's something else you want to see, I'm just trying to get you as much information. Uh, without making it really too boring, I guess, to, to read. You know, I just kind of thought, took back, you know, what are our objectives and then just talked, you know, at each point of the quarter, of during the quarter, what we had did to address those two objectives. And then on the final page, um, just kind of our Q three summary, what were the big movers and things that we were working on during that quarter. So, and you see, it's a pretty long list and I actually deleted some stuff so that it would stay on one page, so. Um, these are things I think that are important to us, that are on our big radar. Number one is the hotel study. We're getting real darn close with having a final copy of that. There is demand, which the main question we set out when we wanted to do hotel study is, is there demand or is there not? Do we need to build something or do we not? And so. I'm getting all the, the green light saying, yes, we, we will have to build something. How big it's going to be, we don't know yet. They're still compiling some of that stuff. But then also running performance too, so we could see if we are gonna build something, how much is it gonna cost, where does it go and all that stuff, so. Just submitted final payment on that. We should have a copy, I think, probably this week. It should be finalized. Anxious to get that out. We've had several different developers reach out to us, so. Uh, the retail study, um, you know, Michael back here has been kind of really the point on that for, for Beatrice, and so, uh, we've, you know, we were. We participated in all this stuff and have helped, but I gotta give kudos to Michael. He's really been the one that's been the main point on it, but. It was an eye-opener for me. I think we set out on this, this retail study to say, you know, what, what business do we put in this exact empty building? And he's really challenged us to say, you know, step back, don't look at that empty space. Let's look at your community and say, what do you want to be in the future? And it's just kind of really, you know, what, we've looked at everything from, you know, the riverfront to what stores look like, to what are our assets now and how do we build on those assets? And so, looking forward to his report. I, I don't know, probably a month or two, I think, maybe from that. I, I can't speak exactly. Couple of weeks. Something fun we've been working on is just kind of marketing a video kind of campaign. Stems way back from when we were gonna do an industrial video and I said, you know, if we're gonna spend all this money on a inter, a video, is it what we really wanted to be working on? And so we. Actually kind of went back to more. People recruitment, kind of public perception and, and notifying people of what's going on in the community and in the county and, and just really showing people doing everyday things, because, you know, we're out and about and we're always seeing people doing stuff. And so we, how do we get that on video, people having a good time and just kind of showing that this is a great place to live and to work and to play and. Um, I'll be honest, we tried to set, we were gonna stage all this stuff. We walked around downtown and we were gonna stage people eating and stage people walking into businesses. And we didn't have to stage anything. And we were actually blowing up this camera. We had our camera guy exhausted because we're like, well, let's catch this. We got a, a guy buying a car and we got some people. At the chiropractor and we got people walking into different restaurants and, uh, none of that was staged, you know? We said, well, let's get a lady buying popcorn. And she's like, oh yeah, absolutely. Oh, ladies, film me getting popcorn. So it was just, what are all these things that we love about our community and how do we put that in a video and make people excited about it? So. We, we actually kind of had a draft of it and then we, we weren't real, real pleased with the draft, so we said, let's go back and change it a little bit. It wasn't exactly what we wanted and so. We had started putting out some teasers and we said, let's kind of build it up, so over the next month or two, we're gonna kind of build it up. Um, we put our first teaser out. It came in our newsletter last week. And then we'll have a couple more teasers that come and just kind of gives you a little taste of what the final kind of community quality of life video will look like. And then we'll give that to anybody who wants to use it, so if someone has a meeting they're starting, you know, a bunch of new people in town or somebody they're recruiting to the community. Um, or just to kind of show about the community we live in, uh, anybody can use that to start and show and share, so. Um, and then still working on brochures as well too. Nolan Fast is kind of working on our brochure. And then we'll think we're gonna do some more, uh, medical kind of recruitment stuff too with the hospital. They're one of our big partners, so we may have a few different brochures coming out. We've had a ton of space or requests for space for industrial and warehousing lately. Um, I actually ran a report and I think we had fourteen companies that are looking for space and we don't have anything, so. I've put out an appeal to many of our partners and contractors and said, if you build something, they will come and I, you know, we have a list of project names and square foot requirements they're looking for. And these companies haven't landed anywhere and we just don't have a dang thing for them, so we have plenty of room in our industrial park to build something. If they're willing to hang on with us for a little bit, we'll get them something up, but, um, all these companies, they say, you know, we're not in the business of real estate. We just want to do our thing. And so they just want to lease and so we just, I think we just need building, so. Working on that. Do you want me to go through all these? Cause there's a ton of stuff going on. I could, you know, I could hammer all day on these details, but what do you guys want to know?
Spend all day because it's positive information.
It's good stuff. It really is. Um, the next thing is the Nebraska Business Development Center, uh, called us to say, can we work with your businesses? We got some funding through the SBA to work with one community and they chose us, and so we said, can we open it up to the county? And they said, absolutely, so we get to work with twelve, well, NBDC gets to work with twelve. with twelve businesses on intensive kind of business development. So, we have an application out right now, I think we have five applications in, so we have room for twelve, and they're due on Wednesday, so we're going to be kind of appealing to some people and saying, you want some free training? And the NBDC folks help with everything, HR, marketing, procurement, just process improvement. They'll just kind of deep dive into your business and say, do you want us to look at your numbers and your projections, or do you want us to help you with your marketing, or, you know, you have high turnover? What is it? And they'll kind of craft this strategy for that company to grow, so. That's, applications are due Wednesday, and then the first week of November, first full week of November, is when NBDC will be down here, working with all of our companies. Getting closer, from my understanding on the Excel deal with the hospital getting demolished, I believe that the hospital's supposed to be coming down, or demo's supposed to start this year, and then in two thousand, early twenty eighteen will be actual construction of the new homes. What else here? Manufacturing Day, so Manufacturing Day was a couple weeks ago. This is, it's celebrated all over the country, and we tried something last year, we didn't really like, you know, our manufacturing group wasn't real pleased with what the turnout was, we just kind of had, all of our manufacturers had open houses the whole day, and it was just kind of, all these guys had to shut down and accommodate all these different tours. So this year, we said, the key to Manufacturing Day for us is how do we get our potential workforce out into the manufacturers? And so, we had a meeting with our, with our manufacturing group and said, who wants to participate? We got five companies that said, we will participate, so we worked with Beatrice Public High School and Southern High School, and had them have kids sign up, and we ended up having, it was twenty-five kids total from both schools, that were generally interested in going to work for one of these manufacturers when they graduate from high school, and we lined up tours with them, and so we gave them lunch, bus rides, we put them, you know, we scheduled out their whole afternoon and of tours with all these manufacturers, and I think it worked out really well. You know, these, our, our manufacturing guys, they got what they wanted, I think they got twenty-five potential candidates, and they didn't have to waste an entire day to do it, and it was really engaged kids, and it was really cool for me on these tours, because the kids were coming away with questions like, how do I get an application? Where do I get an application? And that's exactly what we want to do, is we want these kids to go to high school here, know that there are opportunities, see that they could do some fun things, and stay and make money here and spend it here. This is, I think I talked about this my last time, but then NEAPCO, I was at their, this was in quarter three, but it was before I gave my last report, but it's still technically quarter three, but was able to go a headquarter visit to NEAPCO, which was good timing, because they went through a leadership change here in Beatrice, and they recently hired a new general manager, CEO, president, I don't know what he's called here, but Chief Davidson oversees the whole NEAPCO operation, so he's about three weeks into his working in this facility, looking at moving down here. He's originally from, or he lives in Carney now, is working at Eaton's, but had lunch with Chief the other day just to say hello and kind of get on the same page of what we can do, and how the community's behind them as one of our largest manufacturers, one of our largest employers. But he's, he will be good, I think he'll be really engaged in the community. The Duonics and World Lawn celebrations, I think we talked about these last time, but those also were in quarter three, so the governor is down for both of those, for World Lawn Celebration of their new building, and then Duonics, their official kind of grand opening. Staffing, we had an opportunity to bring on a new person in the, from the community, so Erin Chadwick is now officially our newest staff member at Engage. She's got a ton of really good skills, it was a young, a young family that owns a business here, that invests here, that Erin was really, really involved with ambassadors, the YP Group, and understands a lot of the things that, that we need to understand when we help businesses, and then help attract talent, and so had an opportunity to lure her to Engage, and we're just kind of all trying to figure out how we, we shift our roles to accommodate all of our skills. And then, we're working on the, Our Town, Nebraska, I think there are probably some folks in this room that have invested in that, but we'll have a piece on there, we're partnering with the chamber, Engage and Chamber are partner on, partnering on a promotional piece, I think it's a thirty-second ad, so we're talking about kind of all the things that we do, how do we help businesses, what are our tourism things, what do, you know, what is our industry? Kind of why do people want to live and work and play in Beatrice? So, it's kind of fun to have Laura and I sit down and each take fifteen seconds to discuss all the things that we're going to do and put it into a commercial, so that's kind of a challenge. Just got back in, it was about a month ago, got back from Japan on the governor's trade mission. Though, you know, two purposes of going on these trade missions is, one is, you know, I guess if, our philosophy is, you have to be present to win, and so by being on these trade missions, we're with the delegation, we're with the key players, the key people from around the state that are traveling the globe, wearing our Nebraska hats, so to build those relationships is good, too, but it's also nice to always have a local tie, and with Duonics, half of their, their ownership, half of their original investment was from Utochu Corporation, which is based out of Japan, it's one of Japan's largest commodity trading companies. So, at this Midwest Japan conference, which was one of the big parts of our trip, which is hosted one year in Japan and one year in the United States, being in Japan this year in Tokyo, I had an opportunity to meet with some of those Utochu people and just say, thank you, we, we obviously welcome your investment, and, you know, let them see that or hear that things are going well, and that we would, you know, continue to welcome them if they want to do anything else or come over. So, next year, that Japan conference will be held in Omaha, it's the fiftieth anniversary, and so part of the reason of having a large delegation over there was to encourage so many of those people, companies we worked with, the different prefectures that we visited, was building some of the folks that will come back to Omaha next year and take, partake in the Midwest Japan conference, so. Questions?
Hybrid turkeys.
Hybrid turkeys, did I miss that one? Open house, finally, so, actually not even finally, I feel like it was pretty quick, but, yeah, their open house is set for October twenty-fifth, it'll be in the afternoon.
Wednesday?
Next Wednesday, yeah, we're working on a final schedule for it, but it's, I think it's scheduled from three o'clock, so three o'clock doors will open, we'll have some speeches at three thirty, mayor will be giving some talks, the governor will be in attendance, so we had to kind of work the schedule so it made the best sense for the governor to get down here, but he's, I was working with the governor on the first Hendrix project that we ended up going to Grand Island, and so to be able to see all these things through, and he's been involved in this company from the very early stages, and so it's just another, I think, feather in his hat that those worldwide relationships work out. Yeah, three o'clock to four o'clock, I think, probably four thirty will be drinks and hors d'urves.
Yeah, if you haven't been out there, and Rick Claybaugh and I went out there just one day to meet the general contractor, and he toured his tour, but it's very impressive, and it was still in a state of flux when we were out there, but it's very impressive how they have very top management skills as far as cleanliness, and how they keep any kind of, any kind of compromise from the outside, outside, and they keep the inside very clean, so it's pretty amazing. Any questions of Walker?
My door's always open, call me if you have questions.
Very good, Walker, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item is the city administrator's monthly report, and there's a football game on tonight, and it's his team, so my guess is it's going to be a short report.
That's right, I'm going to talk to Walker after this meeting. To start with, just a few highlights, we've had, the Mill and Overlay project is wrapping up, I know there's a little bit of traffic congestion around the Eighth and Ella Street area the last day or two, but that has been done, I drove through it tonight on my way to the meeting, and so they are working their way back out of town and getting work done. Chief Standing Bear Trail, second phase, that going from Trailhead Park to Demsters has been laid out, and James Burrows is in the process of getting that all engineered and be ready to go out, but he has to have a design done, a layout of where we think that, that trail will ultimately go, and how it will cross that, that area there. And then finally, the turn signal at Highway seventy-seven in Dorsey Street, we got word that the contractors to be on site and begin work November twenty-seventh, so hopefully that will get done, and that turn signal will go in, and people will be able to make a left-hand turn there and head east.
Questions of Tobias?
Can you guess again on Second Street? Step back a little further?
Well, if you, Second Street, they started pouring concrete today, just so everybody understands, the bricks are going back, so concrete base, bricks go on top, and just so people understand, we are going to put the bricks back. You know, obviously the weather has pushed them back, but I have not seen a new schedule that came out any time recently.
Rub it in, sorry.
All right.
It's going to be at least another thirty days, I'm sure.
It's going to be a little while, yeah, they've got some work to do down there, but.
All right, anything else? Anything from the public? All right, the next city council meeting is going to be on November sixth in these chambers, and there's going to be a work session, a little bit of a change on the day, it's going to be Monday, October thirtieth, instead of whatever that Monday is prior, the twenty-third, okay? All right, Mr. Catlin, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I would move that the meeting be adjourned at seven fifty-nine PM.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, the meeting be adjourned at seven fifty-nine PM, your vote please, that's approved seven zero. Thank you, everyone.